So let's go ahead and call this Tuesday, January seventeenth, Board of Ed meeting in order. Would you rise and join me for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Alright. So are we going to begin with Sarah Vallad, the student?
Yes.
Excellent. So Sarah will join us for the Student Council Report.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Hi. It's been quite a while. So to start the night, we'll go over some student life stuff and then athletics, then counseling, then student council. With student life, prior to break, we welcomed Chris Heron once again on December fourteenth to share with students, not just his story, but to encourage students to share theirs. And he had previously come five to six years ago. So it was a nice welcome. We had our SHS Winter Concerts, December twenty-first for chorus and orchestra, and January eleventh for guitar and band. And speaking of musical performances, we have two coming up. We have Coffee House, which is going to be on January twenty-seventh, most likely starting at seven PM. That time is tentative. And we have the Spring Musical underway. We have our cast list selected. It's going to be The Wedding Singer, based on the Adam Sandler movie, and that will be March twenty-fourth to the twenty-sixth. And athletics, with our closing out on the fall sports season and entrance into the winter sports season, there are a few shout-outs that I want to give. So from our past football season, congrats to Matt Fitzsimmons, who won the New York State Class A Football Player of the Year. And then moving on to track and field, congratulations to Jared Google, who became the fourth athlete in Somers history to qualify for the W. Milrose Games in the weight throw. Congrats to Andrew Fason, who broke the school record in the three-hundred-meter event. The previous record previously stood, or the previous record stood for twenty-three years. Congrats to diver Jay Wilkinson, who qualified for the NYSS PHSAA dive competition. And final shout-out to boys basketball, who won the Pelham Tournament over the break, and is currently ranked fifteenth in the New York State. And on to counseling. With the ending of the marking period coming up just this Friday, there are a few events coming up, including the Curriculum Night, which is on the nineteenth, Bosie's Presentation for Tenth Graders, which is on the twenty-sixth, the IB Informational Presentation for Tenth Graders, which will be February first, the IB Information Night for Parents and Students, which will be on February second, and the Eighth Grade Visit Taste of High School, which will be on the tenth. Now with student council, before the break, we had our Winter Spirit Week, which was four days of festive fun. And we introduced our Schoolwide Bingo, which is a pretty big hit. Back in November, we were supposed to go up to Buffalo, up to Niagara Falls, for our NYSLSA conference. Unfortunately, they got about six feet of snow that weekend. So I don't think fun team-building activities would involve digging ourselves out of the snow. So we have a new date for that, which is going to be March twelfth to the fourteenth. And we are also currently in process of filling out our NASTCO Council of Gold Excellence Award, which gives us recognition for all the activities that we've done. And moving away from exec board onto class boards, we have our senior events. We had Mr. Somers on December ninth. Congrats to Tommy Tan for winning. And we have our ice skating trip coming up on February sixteenth. With the juniors, they had their junior prom approved recently and are currently planning for that. And the sophomore class is currently planning for their Valentine's Carnation sales. And that's all for tonight. Thank you.
Amazing.
Thanks, sir.
Thank you, Sarah. So we have our first of two public comments. The first is for items that are specifically on the agenda for this evening. I see we have many folks in attendance. So if you do have a comment to make about what is on the current agenda, please go ahead and use the microphone. We'll ask that you state your name, and we'll try to limit folks to three minutes per speaker. No? Alright, it looks like we can move right on to special recognition. Dr. Blanch?
Great. I'll go ahead and start with this. So tonight, we, once in a while, have our partners and colleagues from Bosie's come and recognize one of our Somers students. And we have that tonight. And I have my colleague Lou Riolis here tonight to go ahead and start us off at the podium, if you don't mind, Lou. Lou is an Assistant Superintendent at our PNW Bosie's. So thank you, sir.
Thank you, Dr. Blanch. Let me begin to thank you for having us this evening and to say how much we truly appreciate working with Dr. Blanch and the entire leadership team here in Somers. We're here this evening to recognize Zane Murphy. And I would ask Mrs. Jennifer Rosen, who's one of our board members at Bosie's, along with Dr. Blanch and along with Zane, to join me up at the podium, please. I'm just going to read the certificate. Whoops, wrong one.
So I haven't seen Zane in a while.
Okay. Student of Distinction, January two thousand twenty-three, from PNW Bosie's. This certificate is awarded to Zane Murphy in recognition for your outstanding leadership, skills, academic progress, and community spirit. Zane, congratulations. Zane, just come on over here. I'd like to now introduce Mr. Michael Koven, who's our principal at Oximero. He has a couple of words to say about Zane.
Good evening, everybody. Thanks for having us here today. So it's with great honor and pleasure that we are here to recognize Zane Murphy. While he has just started with us this past September for his senior year, he's quickly become a leader and a role model on campus. He has this distinction of being well-regarded by both students and staff. He is described as kind, respectful, inquisitive, hard-working, driven, and goal-oriented. Observing him in class daily, Zane diligently works each day on assignments and actively participates in classroom discussions with thoughtful questions and comments. After class, as can be tested by our staff, he can often be found talking to various folks about his job, participation on the wrestling team, or his future goals. What's unique about Zane is not only is he a driven student, but he is also quick to aid peers by offering advice based on his knowledge and experiences, and helping others problem-solve and advocate for themselves. He's currently enrolled in a media program, Career and Technical Education Center at PNW Bosie's, and is looking to pursue post-secondary education in music production. We are honored to have him in our program. And with his strong work ethic and leadership skills, we know he will succeed in anything he pursues. Congratulations, Zane.
Or if it's okay, if you just take a time off for a minute?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Of course. Ready?
Alright, thank you, Paul. So thank you, Board, for letting us do that. Wonderful to hear one of our students, Zane, at PNW Bosie's. If you didn't hear, he's wrestling. So this Friday, we've got our Senior Night. So he'll be wrestling one-twenty-five, I think he is. So I'll go ahead and see that. So yeah. Thank you again for letting us do that. It's a great night. So thank you.
Well, thanks for bringing him. I suppose he has some great programs.
Alright, so I'll just shift into the next part, if that's okay. So tonight, we have a number of different operations reports to kind of be the prelude to the operations side of the non-instructional budget for next year. So I'm going to go ahead. We have, I think, five different reports. And we're going to go ahead. And I think Mrs. Blau is going to go ahead and start up here this evening. So again, Kim is our Director of Technology. And so she will go ahead and provide just a couple of highlighted pieces in here. And most of those will be some of the projects closed out from last year and some that we anticipate moving forward. So thank you, Kim.
Hello, everyone. Just, my name is Kim Blau. I'm the Director of Technology for Somers Center School District. I've been here now ten years, so it's been a long while. I just want to say thank you to Dr. Blanch for allowing me the opportunity to, you know, speak to you guys, and also to the Board of Ed for your continuing support with everything we do here with technology. And also a special thank you to my tech group, my team, who make things happen here throughout all four buildings. So just want to talk about two areas. The first one is the two items in security. So the first new thing that we're doing this year is phishing campaigns. We're doing that to create more cybersecurity awareness and training to our faculty and staff and administration, everybody here. The second thing is, we are in the process of setting up multi-factor authentication. We, the administration team and my team, the tech team, has been on multi-factor authentication for quite some time now. Now, we're bringing on the rest of the faculty and the staff, as well as the Board of Ed members on February fourteenth. So that will be to come. And then the next thing I want to talk about is the five-year technology plan. This year, it was the first year that we started doing some upgrades to our infrastructure. So again, thank you, Board, for your support on the lease purchase for that, because that's the source of funding that we're using to make these upgrades happen. And, you know, the upgrades include things such as our switches, routers, UPSs for our, you know, emergency, you know, backups for power outages. We just did a SAN storage unit for that as well. The plan is high school, middle school first, because this is our NOC building. So we're almost done with this project for this year. And then next year, we're going to complete middle school. And then, just looking over here quickly, and then we're going to move on to high school. High school's going to take two years, because it's the largest building we have. So there's a lot of more, you know, switch classes and stuff like that, network components that we need to take care of. And then SIS is going to be on that third, on that fourth year. And then Primrose will be the last building. And then by the fifth year, I'm hoping that the high school can become our warm site. So that this way, if we have issues right now getting out of, out to the internet, which is through this building, we can piggyback on that other building. So that will be our backup way to get out to the internet. And that's pretty much it. Thank you so much, Board.
So, Kim?
Yes.
The whole, the phishing?
Yes. You want to see?
Old fish barbecue flavor. What are we getting?
So phishing is for cybersecurity.
The little crackers, right?
Yeah. No, no, it's not actually phishing with a lure, just so you know.
I appreciate you when you brought this forward, because we all get hit on this at our home accounts and stuff. So this is bigger than I certainly first anticipated.
Yeah, absolutely. I'm sure you guys at home, on your personal emails, get a lot of, you know, phishing campaigns and people pretending they're, you know, others. So just, I would recommend anybody who's listening to this, make sure you set that MFA settings to, first and also your bank accounts. And any email, like a lot of the third-party email vendors, like Yahoo, AOL, they have now multi-factor settings that you can also turn on. So I would just say, you know, take that opportunity to go through and do that. Just, they, it's not going to stop. They're just looking for that, the weakest link, and, you know, to just make it harder for them to get you. So that's that.
And Kim, thank you for bringing it. I apologize over on the software where it allows our staff, if for whatever reason they inadvertently click on something, then it gives them a learning opportunity right away to kind of, here's what to look out for.
Right. So that's how that works, yes. So thank you, Dr. Blanch, for saying that. So it's just a little link. If they do click on the bad link, they're going to be prompted for like a little mini training video module. And it's just teaching them. And again, this is just for here, also for home. And it just helps everybody all around. So thank you.
Thank you.
Is this, I'm curious, is this something that we also do for our students who have student email accounts?
Not yet. Not yet. I could see that happening at some point as part of the computer science and the curriculum. So I'll have to work with a learning office to see where that will fit in. But I would love to get to that point, because it does, they're already digital citizens. They're all over the, you know, internet and stuff like that. So you just want to make sure. I mean, I know as a parent, I constantly speak to my sixteen-year-old, you know, "Don't do this. Don't click on that. I feel like I sound like a broken record." So down the line, I would love to be able to partner with a learning office to see if we can get that phishing campaign. I know other local colleagues are also looking to do that as well.
That's great. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Alright. Thank you.
Think we've got Anthony up next, right?
Yep. So up next, we have Anthony Damato, our Director of Facilities, to provide an update and overview of our Facilities Department. Thank you, Anthony.
Thanks, Chris. Thanks, Dr. Blanch. Thanks for having me here tonight. I appreciate your time. I just would like to start by going over just a little bit of the background about the Facilities Department. The facilities themselves are comprised of five primary buildings, four schools, approximately six hundred thousand square foot of building space, fifty-five acres of land, three playgrounds, and currently two turf fields. On the staff side of things, I have twenty-four custodial staff. There's seven maintenance slash grounds staff, one courier, one administrative assistant, and one Director of Facilities. Speaking of staff, my staff has really been doing a great job over this past year, since the last time we were together. So I'd like to thank them for all their hard work this year. So with facilities, there's always the need to maintain and improve these facilities. And in doing so, there are several ways to fund these larger facilities improvements outside of the general fund. One of, one of the ways of doing this is an energy performance contract, which we spoke about the last time I was here. And this is essentially an upgrade to new, energy-efficient building systems, and it's funded by its own energy savings. Update. Over the past years, with the past year, many of the systems have been installed, such as new boilers in three schools, LED lighting throughout the district, a new building management system, which is still being integrated. It has not been met without challenges. So something that we've been really running across is really long lead times to actually get some of this, some of the equipment, ventilation equipment specifically. As a matter of fact, some of them are even coming or plan to come in a year after they've been ordered. So there's been some real long lead times there. Great project, just with some challenges. Another way to fund some of these larger projects is a capital reserved, a capital reserve, pardon me, established by the Board and voted on by the community. This fund is used to complete larger-scale project without an increase in debt service. So we have begun the design process for some new tennis courts here, I'm sorry, at the high school, along with some new turf fields for both softball and baseball, as well as some track and field upgrades. And we will be doing some work on the interior of the buildings in order to get aid for the outside portions in the fields. One other way of funding is a capital bond project, which is a large project with a predetermined scope and cost that will be voted on by the community to develop, improve, renovate, and renovate the existing facilities. So the district is working with our architect firm, as well as some internal parties, to brainstorm what a potential scope of work could be for a future capital bond project. Very soon, we'll be starting walkthroughs to establish and develop a building condition survey, which will help us identify different systems and issues with the facilities. And we can use that to help us develop a scope of work for an upcoming capital bond project. So some exciting stuff happening right now, some exciting stuff in planning, and some exciting stuff happening in the future. So we really do look forward to all of these projects coming together to improve the facilities on a whole. And I'd like to thank the Board and the community for their continued support in these upgrades and making it a better facility for all the students and staff.
Thank you, Anthony.
You're welcome.
Appreciate it.
Thank you, Anthony.
Thanks.
So up next, we have Gerard Esposito. He's our Assistant Transportation Supervisor. He'll provide an update on our Transportation Department over this past year.
Gerard, I was expecting you to bring like a bus and put it up.
Still nervous, but next time, I'll definitely bring that. Thank you, Chris, for the introduction. Thank you, Dr. Blanch. Thank you, Board, for having me here tonight to talk about the Transportation Department. I just want to go over some stuff that has happened over the last year. Currently, this year, we are transporting around twenty-eight hundred students per day across forty-nine routes. That's thirty-four in-district routes and fifteen out-of-district routes. The Somers staff in the Transportation Department consist of one Assistant Supervisor, one Admin Assistant, and twenty-one school bus monitors. At Royal Coach, they currently have one Terminal Manager, one Dispatcher, one Safety Manager, two Mechanics, and forty-nine school bus drivers. On a day that a bus driver is out, the Royal Coach works very diligently to help us by sending another driver from another location up to Somers to help out. Some improvements that we had over the year. We are currently in the Bus Patrol Program, which we started, which we joined in spring of last year. The Bus Patrol Program is stop-arm cameras that do catch vehicles when they run the stop signs for the school buses. And it sends the information to the Westchester County Police Department, which would then issue a ticket. Currently, the county does not have this program across all the school districts. And we are working with Westchester to get that board, to get that approval for all districts in the Westchester County area. The other thing we have done is we reestablished the Transportation Committee, which consists of a PTA lead, a building admin from each of the school buildings, a couple of parents from each school, myself and Mr. Plutania. We do have another meeting in February, and we will be discussing some updated information from Bus Patrol and a survey that I sent out about Here Comes the Bus. We also do have upcoming, the second half of the annual training for drivers, which will consist of updated SED requirements and New York State regulations. And the final thing that we have coming up this year so far is, on January twenty-third, we have a de-escalation training for all of our monitors to help them on situations with buses, any situation that would happen while en route. And thank you for your time.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you, Gerard.
Very excited to hear about the de-escalation training on the buses. Thank you for that. For when Dr. Blanch is on the bus.
Gerard doesn't let me out. He won't let me. He'll give me keys and nothing.
Next up, we have Jill Weisman, our Food Service Director.
Hello. Thank you for the introduction, Dr. Blanch and Chris. Hello, Board. Thank you for having me. I am still relatively new to the position. I've been here eighteen months, but I've made quite a few changes, thanks to my wonderful staff, who've been able to do a lot of things. Right now, we're feeding about fifteen hundred students each day. My department consists of me, the Food Service Director. I have four cook managers. That's one at every school. They're in charge of the day-to-day operations, twenty-two food service workers, and three substitutes. We started making improvements right when I got here, and we continue to do so. But the same challenges with, you know, products getting here and things like that. But we are working daily to improve what we give the students. So we know that breakfast, eating breakfast improves student participation, academic performance, and attitude. And over the last sixteen months, we've increased participation in breakfast fifty percent. We've done that by offering a variety of new items. Offer hot meals every day at every school, and a variety of cold. And then we offer grab-and-goes, where they can sit down and eat. So across the board, everybody can get something that they like. We're currently serving over twenty-two hundred breakfasts a month, district-wide, which is awesome. Lunch improvements, we've increased the number of options daily from four when I got here to thirteen different options a day. We're serving three lunches every minute of service district-wide, which is awesome. Our menu at most schools includes one hot option, five cold, four different salads, and three alternate meals. We're also doing menu modifications for gluten-free students. I've been working with parents to work on menus every month for those students in particular, so they don't feel left out when they come to the line, their meal prepared. And food intolerances. And then we have student suggestions as well. I work with the Student Senate to get their feedback from other students, so we can work to improve the menu. Working, we introduce at least one new item, menu item, a month, starting at the high school. See how that goes. And then we'll bring it to middle school, and then down to elementary. It seems to go better feedback-wise from the older kids. At the high school, we started community lunch this year, which was briefly done before COVID. So we jumped right in this year. I have a high school team of nine. We serve three hundred and fifty meals from two cafeterias in forty-three minutes, which is fantastic. I couldn't do it without them. We do made-to-order options, pre-made meals, three different hot options. We have a custom, two different custom delis, and we do pre-orders as well. But preparing for community lunch, we do a lot of preparation before, and we close our doors right after. So during our downtime, I work with the work-based learning program students at the high school, the Skip and Bosie students, and they run a snack program during our off-hours with our products and our POS terminals. And they stock their own shelves. They do their own inventory, their own customer service. And we just started this past week doing, we have one student who wants to be a baker. So she comes in and bakes cookies with her aide, and she sells them out of her snack room. And we started iced coffee in there as well this week.
I bumped into her last week. It seemed like her first day. She's pretty well.
She's doing great.
She's great.
We have sold out every single day since she started. It's insane. So I continue to make improvements every day. And hopefully, you know, more scratch-made stuff next year, as products are consistently coming in, and we'll get there.
So when can we do a board tour of the snack shop?
Maybe we should get some cookies made for OLS. Thank you so much.
Thank you for having us.
Thank you.
I loved seeing that we love student input in the statistics column. That was very exciting. As a parent, I can tell you that it's effective, because the funds, the lunch funds are dwindling more regularly. Well done.
And for our last update tonight, we have Dan Carrato from Alteris to provide a safety and security update.
Thank you, Chris. Good evening, Dr. Blanch. Thank you, Board, for giving me a chance to be here tonight and talk a little bit about the safety and security, where we are, as far as just some updates, and just a little bit of a summary over some points from the past. So one of the things I wanted to talk about was our safety drills. So we have to do twelve safety drills over the course of the school year. Eight have to be done before December thirty-first. That is a combination of evacuation drills and lockdown drills. So right now, we have, each building has six evacuations and two lockdown drills done. So we're right on par for where we need to be at this point in time for the drills. So when we do the lockdown drills, one, we have some, from the safety and security bond, we have some new ways that we can initiate those drills. So one is, we have lockdown buttons that are around the buildings. We have five to seven buttons that are strategically placed in each of the buildings. We also have the phone system that we had even before the lockdown system, the VoIP phone system, that we have a code to punch in the phone that can initiate a lockdown. And we also have the computer, the administrators, building and district administrators, from their computer can also put the building into lockdown, as well as a InformaCast cellphone app that building administrators can use. So there's a number of different ways now that we have in order to initiate a lockdown in a building. So why I bring this up is, what the important piece of this is that, once that process is initiated, the state police are immediately notified. So as soon as you press the button, or as soon as you punch the code in the phone, that sends it right to the TMC, Traffic Management Control for the state police, goes right to dispatch, and they can dispatch right away. There's also a notification that goes through email and text message, goes to what I call our Somers nine-one-one or lockdown team, which is consists of about twenty-seven people from district and building administrators, including our SROs and the SRO Sergeant. So they also are immediately notified via that manner, as well as the Westchester County Police Desk also gets an email advising that we have a lockdown situation at whichever building is involved. So that message gets law enforcement coming to assist us very quickly. All of our buildings are monitored twenty-four-seven for any type of issues, whether it's somebody breaking in, a burglar alarm, a fire alarm. We have water alarms, too, in closets. We had an issue with that a while, a couple of years ago. So now we have a number of different ways of protecting the buildings. We also have a way of reporting things through the anonymous alert system that we have. It's embedded into our district website, as well as the building tabs there. All have, there's a tab to report to twenty-four-seven an anonymous alert of some sort. Those are not emergency reports. It's what they should be. They shouldn't, if it's an emergency, folks should be either contacting nine-one-one or making a call to local law enforcement. When I started, we had about, that was four years ago, we had about seventy, now we have almost three hundred. So that's been a tremendous upgrade. Some of the things that we've completed since last year is our Incident Command, which happens to be my office, which is, was really nice to get that complete, so now we have four monitors set up in the office, and each one of those monitors has approximately twenty cameras that we, myself and the SROs kind of pick and chose as to, you know, possibly more vulnerable sites, because we picked twenty, just a good working number, otherwise it just gets a little too busy. We also, this year, have gotten up and running with our Health and Safety Committee, that we've kind of reestablished, it seems that it had kind of fallen off a little bit over the last couple of years, so we have that reinstated. Also, on the district website, under the Facilities tab, is a way for folks to report an issue with a building that might fall under the Health and Safety Committee, so there's a tab there, anybody from the community can get on there and file a report. The big project that we finally finished from this safety and security bond was our door alarm systems. We hadn't had those up and running, because as we were about to get those up and running, of course, COVID hit, and things just seemed to, that was going to be a big change in the behavior of the buildings and how folks were gonna, you know, operate on their day-to-day basis with everything that was going on, we decided to push it back a little bit, and finally, we have those up and running as of September. So the, initially, it was a little bit of a, luckily, we did a lot of training and let people know what to expect, I think that was a big help in getting people on board and re-acclimated to, you know, their daily, their daily business. So we started out with about three to four hundred alarms a day, and it was quite busy around the district, Chris can attest to this, and now, we're down to about twenty to thirty, I would say, alarms that we get a day, which is a very manageable number, we can go as soon as we get them. Those notifications go to the building administrators, the School Resource Officer, myself, Chris, and Anthony Damato get all those alarm activations, so then we can check the cameras, see what caused it, and usually, it's just people forgetting as they're exiting the building, but periodically, we will find a door that is ajar, that it just didn't close all the way for whatever reason, there's dirt in the sill, or it just, you know, it wasn't enough weight to get it to lock completely. We get a door propped or held open alarm within a minute, and then we were able to see that the door wasn't closed, we had two of those, you know, since then. So that's another big piece of that system, was to know that the building, those doors are always secure, our exterior doors, you know, as that system is active. Some things that are coming up, we have a district-wide training that's coming up on March 3rd, that's going to be presented by the Westchester County Police Department, it's the training, the acronym is CRAZE, it's Civilian Response to Active Shooter Event, and the second piece of that is going to be just a summary of Stop the Bleed. Those two are kind of their own presentations, but due to a little bit of time, we thought they were both important topics to get out to district, to faculty and staff, so that's going to happen on March 3rd, it's about a three-hour block of training. And then, the last piece that I'm working on now is lockdown classroom kits, so we've got a couple of quotes for those classroom kits, it's, those will consist of just like a bucket with a, with a, like a toilet seat lid on it, some, some bags and things to, you know, for, folks have to use the bathroom, a tarp for privacy, duct tape, just some things, just in case if we go into lockdown and the kids are kind of stuck in one area for a while, the bathroom is really the, kind of the, one of the number-one things that we would be concerned about. So we're looking into that now, hopefully, we'll work that out before the end of the year. Thank you very much.
Thanks for the work, Dan, thank you.
Thanks.
All right, so I think after that, then we'll go ahead, and thanks for the team for coming tonight, I appreciate you being here, so please feel free to head home, so.
Look at Kevin egging them on over there.
So we're gonna go ahead and jump right into then the proposed budget here, I think Chris has got us warmed up there, so we'll go ahead and start to walk through that piece, so again, with just a couple of slides, again, as we've done this the last few months, we'll talk about some of the development and the revenues as we work through this, and tax levy maximum, and lease purchase, and debt service, the things that you heard about tonight from the non-instructional kind of directors and things that we're working there. So go ahead and just on that next slide, just the budget development, again, with our guiding principles from our district's vision piece here, input from our different stakeholder groups, and different budget variables that we'll continue to talk about, those large ones as far as on the revenue and expenditure sides that land with us, and then the calendar here, we're kind of in that January to March timeframe where the presentations are being made and chunking those out. Again, tonight is focused in on the kind of non-instructional area, and then that budget vote coming in May. So go ahead and turn that over to Chris, again, our balance is always trying to look at those revenues and expenses, so those will create a balance, so.
And then I'll just jump over right over to the next slide, revenues for the, for this year, a large portion of it comes from tax levy, next biggest item is state aid. Again, it's still a little early for the state aid number, as we shouldn't, we should be getting those numbers within the next couple of weeks, once the governor approves their budget, hopefully by February 1st, which then allows us to then really start to finalize our budget numbers.
So, Chris, sorry, real quick, so this looks, makes it appear that all of these are equal sources of revenue, because there's not like a percentage, is that, that's not the case though, correct?
It is not the case at all. Tax levy represents somewhere in the neighborhood of eighty-five percent, and then state aid's about another eleven or twelve percent, and then the rest is three or four percent.
Okay.
So this next slide is just the last four years for our tax levy history, so going back to nineteen, the 2019, 2020 school year, the actual levy that was raised was at the maximum tax levy. Then for 2021, the maximum tax levy compared to what was actually levied was about a little over four hundred thousand dollars less than what we could have levied by staying within the tax cap. Following year, 21, 22, we levied the actual amount that was equal to the maximum tax levy, and then this current year, 22, 23, there was about a 1.6 million dollar difference between what was levied and what the district could have levied, all within, staying within the tax cap. So over the last, you know, three or four years, the district has stayed approximately two million dollars under the allowable tax levy limit. So again, there's a lot that goes into the tax levy limit calculation, it's not just two percent, there's other exclusions that apply, often driving that number above two percent. Again, the district, historically, if we don't need to, we're not just going to raise taxes just for the sake of raising taxes, as you can see this past year where there's 1.6 million dollars that we didn't raise. But there are years where we need to raise the maximum that we can, especially when times of inflation and rising costs that are beyond our control. So that was kind of just the purpose of this slide, just to kind of show the last couple of years, the district, when, when it didn't have to, wouldn't, didn't go to the tax cap levy limit. And as we jump into, these are just some of the items for the non-instructional budget, we have auditing, legal, and insurances, buildings and grounds, transportation, and then benefits.
Excuse me.
So this first slide, audit and legal and insurances, so again, when preparing some of these presentations, as we're still kind of early in the budgeting process, they're only good for a moment in time, so just take insurances, for example, this presentation was repaired, you know, a week ago, since then, I've had a meeting with Nicer, who is our insurance company, which does most of the districts in New York State, and they have informed us that the rates are going to be going up anywhere between eight and twelve percent, which is more than, more than we anticipated. So, some of these numbers will change before the final budget is adopted, but, so this is just kind of some of the environment that we're in right now, where there's still just some unknowns, and we're, you know, we project what we anticipate, and then sometimes, those numbers don't come in always where we'd like them to be.
Chris, about what percent of the budget is the non-instructional?
If we're not including, say, salaries and, I don't want to make up a number here.
No, I just.
Because there's a lot that goes into that non-instructional, because there's plenty of instructional, there's plenty of salaries that go into that too, which are all kind of part of it, I can certainly come back with a number at another board meeting, just to give you that number, for sure.
But it's a much smaller percentage than the instructional, correct?
Yes, that I can say. So this next slide is Buildings and Grounds Department, as Anthony Damato, our Director of Facilities, spoke about earlier, this is just some of the background of the staff, and then the amount of buildings that we have, and square footage, and these are just some of the larger buildings and ground expenses, and one thing I'll just point out, you see for the last two, they're heating oil and electricity, we have a range right now. Anthony Damato spoke about our energy performance contract that we have undergone, which has come at a fantastic time, as oil prices have gone up and electricity rates have gone up. Now with our new boilers and new lighting, it will certainly help, but unfortunately, costs are still rising, because the, the rates are just going up more than the savings that we're going to realize by the, by can, using less, less oil and less, less electricity. So we're kind of right in the middle of our heating season, so we're still monitoring how much oil consumption we're using compared to the previous years, to try to make a final determination on how many gallons of oil we're going to budget, same goes for electricity. So that is the, the reason where we don't typically have a range in here, we usually kind of have a number where we're looking at, but for this year, as we kind of still want to see it another, you know, month, month and a half before we finalize the budget, we didn't want to put a kind of concrete number in there, so that's why the purpose of the range this year.
See, Dr. Blanch has a pie chart to share with Chad, I think some data that he'd asked for.
Is she cheating on my test?
I want to acknowledge that you're being responsive to the questions.
I was just thinking, what I was thinking about was, as, as Chris just puts into our annual budget report, which has become in a forthcoming, I always think about the five-part budget that you kind of described walking through, and I always think about the combination of the, the salaries for the employee costs are seventy-five to seventy-seven percent of that balance of that piece, so that's where, again, we don't typically break it out by instructional or non-instructional, so we can go back and get that, but that's the, the big chunk in there with the salaries and the benefits that are related to it.
Right. Yep, but we can certainly go back and kind of break that down a little bit, just so we can see it kind of instructional versus non-instructional.
Thank you.
Didn't mean to call you up there.
No, no, it's all good.
I was excited that you were like, ready with it.
This next slide is transportation, as Gerard Esposito spoke about earlier tonight in his operations update, we transport, you know, approximately twenty-seven hundred students, and we're going to various schools and places, not just in Somers, you can see some of the schools listed here. So we're currently looking to reduce another vehicle for next year's budget, so the, the issue, obviously, we, we've had some declining enrollments, so that certainly helps as far as transportation's concerned, and ideally, we'd, we'd like to have fully staffed for this amount of buses and vans. I know Royal Coach is actively searching for more bus drivers, and one of the things with transportation is when, like, an out-of-district student moves into the district, when a student that moves into the district has an out-of-district placement, so, and if we don't have a vehicle going in that, to that school already, then that's just another route that we have to add, so there's always those, those little variables that come into play with transportation.
And we're mandated by law to ensure that that child can be transported safely.
Absolutely.
Which is why we then go ahead and find a way to transport that child, for anyone who's listening, but, thank you.
So now, moving to some of the largest benefits, the New York State Teachers Retirement System, they announced a range, the employer contribution of about nine and a half to ten percent, that will be a slight decrease from the current rate of 10.29 percent. The New York State Employees Retirement System is going up from 11.6 to 13.1 percent. Now, the, the biggest one that we've gotten clearer rates for was from the Empire Plan from this last, from the last presentation, that runs, that is a NICE-IT plan for instructional staff for their health insurance, that plan runs from January to December 31st, the actual rate increase for 2023 was over sixteen percent.
Wow.
So for budgeting purposes, we're going to hopefully err on the side of caution, but even at thirteen percent might not be enough, but it's, again, it's something, we're hopeful that these rates come down, because they're not sustainable, if we continue to have sixteen percent increases in health insurance, it's very difficult to manage that. And then, for all other staff, not instructional, the, we belong to the Health Benefits Consortium Plan, and that runs on the school fiscal year, July 1 through June 30th, and that rate increase for next year was announced at five and a half percent.
So, Chris, just for some clarity, because I know when we were talking, planning the agenda, we had a little conversation about this, with that huge increase of sixteen percent that you see in the Plan for Instructional Staff, that's quite a bit more than what you use with the other staff, but right now, we're contractually locked in to Empire Plan, that's something that would have to be renegotiated.
Correct.
But the other thing you'd also pointed out was that, I guess, historically, the Empire Plan increase has actually been much smaller, so hopefully, it's a blip, you know, it's not going to be a consistent increase?
Yeah, yeah, there have been many years where it's been much smaller than 16.6 percent, for sure, that is an anomaly, so we're hoping that that does not continue, but we also need to plan for it in case it does, because when that, that 16.6 percent is going to impact the current year's budget.
Right.
Because we did not budget for over sixteen percent increase for 2023, so these next six months, we're going to be paying at the increased rate, yet we did not budget for that, because we don't typically see these type of increases.
What did we, what did we budget for, out of, off the top of your head?
I want to say six and a half percent.
Six and a half, yeah.
Wow, that's a big difference.
Which you can see, the other group came at six and a half, I think it was a year before last, Chris, I think it was just short of zero.
Yeah, it was, it was like half a percent, and they made the, they specifically wrote it out that this was not a typo, because you don't see, typically see the half a percent rate, increase, but, yeah, so to go from that a couple of years ago now to over sixteen percent, it's concerning.
Yeah, so there's no, there's nothing you can do in terms of pushback on that kind of volatility, or to try to get it to be more stable.
Unfortunately, not.
And so, but it's also increasing out-of-pocket expenses for the employees too, the staff.
Yes.
Okay, so that may be something that if it continues to increase exponentially, it would be possible to look at other options and renegotiate, okay.
Now, this is just kind of putting some numbers to some of the items that I just discussed, and again, this is only at a moment in time, as we continue to finalize the staffing budget, all of these kind of numbers that relate to that staffing budget will, will change, but as you can see, the, the largest increase is for the health insurance column there of just over 1.4 million dollars. Again, that's nothing that we did, or noth, you know, nothing that we can really do about it, as far as the rates that are increasing, that is what we're left with having to, having to manage.
Presumably, there are other insurers that are also increasing exponentially, so we could probably look across the board and see that others are increasing at an equal rate as well, right, so, so it's not that just the folks that we're particularly working with have an increase.
Yeah, there are definitely places that are increasing, but then maybe not to the sixteen percent, but like the PNW Health Benefits Consortium that we also belong to, that was only five and a half percent, but there are years that they've been higher than the Empire Plan.
But just in order to look at the entire industry, right, so when we look at just this one particular insurer, it might look like a big jump, but when you look across all of them, then this looks pretty, you know, comparable, right?
Yes, they've all, they've all gone up quite a bit.
Thank you.
On this slide, we have lease purchase, which is something that Kim Blough spoke about earlier, again, this, this current budget, we added some additional funds as there were items identified in the five-year plan that our new vendor created, Edutec created when they first came on board with us, and as we look to still try to implement some of those infrastructure upgrades that are needed, we're looking to add some funds into this lease purchase code, so some of the upgrades, this is how we get all of our instructional devices, tablets, iPads, laptops, displays, and then... And then there's some of the larger infrastructure upgrades that Ms. Blau spoke about earlier. Some of the, you know, the cabling and the MDF network switches and access points and all this stuff that is needed as we continue to increase our technology in the schools.
Yes, I'm, I'm sorry, just thinking back on the insurance piece there. I always have to remind myself about the number of people that are in that plan for the state. It's over a million people.
Oh, in that higher.
So we, you know, we're not like, it's a big one. So that plan is covers over a million New Yorkers and those are from schools as well as other government employees, but you're talking about over a million people that are in that plan. So, you know, we just got a few hundred in there, but there's, so there's lots of school districts that are having this exact same conversation the board is, so.
Thank you.
I don't know if it's a stupid question, so I, I know we have a decline in enrollment, right? And I know this, this encompasses everything, like all the tablets and everything. Can we explain why it's still going up? Is it just cost of materials?
Costs are one, and it's the major infrastructure upgrades that we're doing that have been identified by Edutec in that kind of five-year plan, where we're going to be replacing a lot of these, this outdated technology to really help, help us now and help us for the future.
And that's what Kim was talking about, like the NOC here in the middle school, that's been all being fully replaced here. Pretty, pretty hefty cost there. And then as she mentioned before, having the high school being a warm spot, so we have redundancy and our internet access. So those are all those pieces that are coming. And so one of the parts that we were, it's been a number of years, I think districts are still accessing, accessing that from the state though, but as the Smart Schools Bond Act, we were, I think, if not the first, the second school in the state to ask for, get the money. That put our phone system in and helped us put our wireless access technology in there too. So that was the first, and actually Dan mentioned that earlier this evening too, about when our first safety and security piece is going there too. But it is an expensive piece to making sure that hardware is updated and maintained. So this gets us the next layer of, of consistent coverage as well as on a clear replacement plan, so.
This involves all the wiring, like when we, I was here a couple of weeks ago, right?
Yes. Yeah, we try to run those at night and stuff, yes.
And this slide on debt service is just a reminder where we kind of currently stand. That, that top line, that 2006, 2009 building project, that, that debt kind of runs for another year or two, if I extended this out a little bit further. And that's where our next kind of big capital project will be looking to bring on some a larger scale project, which will then bring on that debt, but it'll be replacing that debt that's falling off to kind of maintain a level of debt service.
So if you look at Chris's calendar here, you'll see that the 23 school year, this year, we'll be looking to access, as Chris will mention in a moment here, about our capital reserve funds. If you fast forward in the May of 2025, that's where we're anticipating putting out the next bond question. And then as Chris said, what'll start to happen over a two to three year cycle, some will go off of the existing one, and the intent is the other one's layer on top. So at least things cost neutral. As the one slowly walks on, we walk the other one above, so it stays cost neutral. Allows us to go ahead, we've mentioned before about the building condition survey, the multi-million dollars worth of paving and concrete work and things like that. Some continued work on our HVAC systems, some of our roofing systems. And also then looking at, looking at some of the educational envelope, some of the back to the original 69 parts of the high school. So those would be the other elements we'll look at. But the intent here is bring one down, bring the other on line, so it basically just stays cost neutral in the middle there. Nothing additional will come onboard, it's just to making sure. And that's where the number one, Chris, kind of did their look. We typically around districts, you're running about four to eight percent of your kind of debt service here in relationship to your overall budget. We're at about five, five and a half percent, and we'll stay at that number, so. Thanks, Chris.
And another kind of benefit of maintaining that level of debt service is, it is factored into the tax cap calculation. So if we don't have this, this number dropping or increasing from year to year, it does help kind of maintain a level, so we're not seeing those big spikes or, or a tax cap that could potentially be a negative tax cap number. And then as we are going to be looking, so last year, we did establish the capital reserve fund for up to $10 million. Last year, we did transfer some, about four and a half million dollars into that fund. We're going to look to do another transfer at the February board meeting to get that up to somewhere between six and seven million dollars. And then some of those items that we're going to be looking to improve on are building six new tennis courts at the high school, and then turfing the entire baseball and softball field. And then there's some additional track and field upgrades. And as our Anthony Damato mentioned about the building renovations inside the schools, what that will allow us to do is then generate the aid on the, the outside work, the field work that we're doing. So there will be some small projects. We have to do at least $10,000 worth of work inside the building, so we'll do that at both of, both the high school and Primrose in order to generate the aid for outside the building. So we'll be asking the voters to vote on that in May as a separate proposition to access those funds. They voted to approve it last May to establish it, and now in order for us to access the funds for the purpose that we described when establishing it, they also have to vote on that.
So the funds are already there, but now it's a matter of going back to the voters and saying, you wanted us to go ahead and make these changes, these enhancements to the district. Is it now okay if we go ahead and take this and, and do what we anticipated?
Yes. Yep.
And it's not, again, it's not new money, it's money that's just shifted around from over, I don't, I hate to say overages, but whatever.
Surplus funds at the end of the year.
Surplus funding, that's the word.
There could be, there was funds that we had in our Employee Retirement System Reserve Fund that we did transfer at the end of last year. Again, there was, and the reason that fund had additional money was because of the COVID shutdown where we had additional savings. So we put it into the Employee Retirement System, again, knowing that a year from then, that we'd be looking to establish this reserve fund as we kind of look towards the future.
But these are funds that are accrued over years of time.
Yes.
And we are mandated by the state to have some sort of coverage, just in case, you know, one of these funds are not covered. That's correct, right?
Yeah.
So just so that people who are paying attention are, aren't thinking that we're all of a sudden moving things around.
Right, no new money, nothing like that. This is money that we've had and accumulated over the course of a few years.
This is an absolute plan. This has been going on for decades, and so this allows us, cost avoidance, to bond this. This is a project that is not bonded, so there's no interest on any of this. It's an opportunity for us to have our savings account, so you can get these synthetic surfaces going for these fields, tennis courts, which we don't have on the grounds proper, some other adjustments, but instead of bonding for that over a 15-year period, we don't. We, we pay for that out of our savings account. So we allowed to avoid that. Same thing, the board did this a few years ago. Last one was on the resurfacing of the existing athletic fields. So again, that, those fields came on as part of a large bond project with the additions to the high school and to the middle school and that. But the replacement, the upgrade of the synthetic surface was all through your savings account. We didn't bond for the few million dollars it took. We saved over a few years to do that, and then now it's paid for, you know, basically in cash and done with it. It's going to be the same part here. So this won't take away from the bond project I spoke about earlier. This will be addressed and in a timely fashion where it's needed now. And then the next project will go after and take care of some of those other building envelope things like, you know, the HVAC and the different areas as far as our boilers and some of our electrical, we're hitting the lights. That project again, that, you know, Anthony mentioned earlier, that minus the increase in the cost per unit, that was going to be a cost neutral. We go ahead and buy our savings, we can get those new boiler plants on place, which we will, get these new lights on place, which we will. Savings will pay for themselves over the 10-year, 12-year period. And then so that's another opportunity where we're doing that. So no cost savings there for energy performance contract, savings account here, we don't add those contracts. The other large ones, you're going to have part of it. So those three pieces that Anthony spoke before at the end of his slide, that's exactly this in action, so.
And if we had to bond this, we would have to, then it would add to that debt service that we discussed about, and it would increase it.
Increase, we're kind of a little bit too heavy on our ratio there, yep.
And this was presented to us in the fall at a meeting, the studies and the reasoning behind the needs for this capital.
Yep, and we've had a committee that met, actually, we started this conversation pre-COVID, to be honest. There were some groups we started with, then bam, everything kind of shut down. Then we brought it back online last year, always some community members representing these different programs. And we actually have our mid, our winter meeting tomorrow to look at the 50% design plans. We're ready to hopefully get to the state by the third week in February, so.
How many years ago, Ray, was it when the folks from the tennis came and, and asked us if we?
January of, I'm sorry, December of 19, when we started working on it, yeah.
Was that when they first came to the table and asked?
Yep, and then we had some other internal conversations with the other sports and things, and so we had hoped to have been here already, but as we know, the world shut down. And so glad to see we're back online and we'll learn more, we're going to be at the mercy of, of the state once we put our plans in, how fast we can execute this. Our plan is to get in February, if we can get this turned around, and our community will support this in May, we'll be able to kind of start breaking around this summer to start changing those spaces over. So just got to get that approval from the state. Thanks, Chris.
There are a lot of great updates, Ray, to the, the high school and Primrose. There, are there ways that we're looking to help the intermediate school and the middle school be able to access those fields as well, those turf? Are we bringing them over there to use any of those?
So in tennis in particular, we're very interested in seeing if we can get a modified program going for tennis. This would be a lot easier for us to get our kids to our campus instead of trying to get them. Towns have been great letting us to use those facilities, but if we have there, we would, definitely would love to get a modified tennis program going. So that's one example, sure.
This last slide is just upcoming board event meeting dates and budget topics. So in February, it'll be another budget planning session, that'll be on the instructional budget. In March, then we'll have a summary of the budget, and then April 18th, budget summary again, and a budget adoption. May 2nd, there's a public hearing that we're required to have, and then again, all leading to the May 16th budget vote and trustee election.
Thanks, Chris.
Thanks, Chris. Any questions, folks?
No, thank you.
How's it?
So the next item on our agenda are the committee and liaison reports. I'm wondering, because I see some folks here tonight, Heidi, I think you mentioned that there was a report that you'd like to give, wondering if anyone else here would like to share from the, from their committee?
Yeah, we probably have a couple, I don't know, I can talk about.
The seat perhaps?
Yeah, well, we just had a seat meeting, so Amanda was at that also, so I don't, she could speak to that as well, but do you want me to summarize it?
Yeah, you could go ahead.
Okay, yeah, so we, the second whole group seat committee meeting was today, and that was really, it was well-attended, it had a real good, positive feel to it. What I can share out is that all the subcommittees, there's four subcommittees this year, and all of them have met now and began their work. So the main thing that we were doing at the whole group meeting today was sharing out what each subcommittee is working on and getting some feedback from others in the room who aren't on that committee. What are their questions, are there feedback, are there, you know, suggestions for next steps? So the committees are, there's Community Voices. The first big initiative on that in trying to get, get feedback from, from students and community members is a student essay contest. So we got, that was sent out already, the information. So middle schoolers and high schoolers are invited to participate in either video or written, written essays. So look for that, it's, it's coming out in all the different, the high school and middle school newsletters and is, is being publicized. And it's open for all students, sharing their, their experience with belonging in, in Somers.
In middle school and high school.
In middle school and high school, yes. And so that's the first, that's kind of the first thing that's being worked on there. And, and the information that, that we receive from that is going to be used to help them guide future work, because you're, you're getting student experiences, understanding, hopefully from a broad perspective of students in our schools, you know, where they're at, what they need, what, what their views are, and then that can help guide future, future work. And then the Student Learning Committee has been, you were on that one, right?
I am, but ironically, I didn't go to that particular subcommittee meeting, so I just have the notes from it. It was one of my son's concerts that night. But basically, we're looking at the, the 48-10 policy on controversial issues with teaching and seeing if there's ways to improve upon that. And so we just had one meeting, we're going to have another meeting next week, and hopefully the work will continue, and we'll get the feedback from today as well, and, and move forward on that.
So it sounds like that may be something that may, they may be asking the board to re, reexamine that policy.
Even though it's not in the cycle.
Yes. So an example of where some of the work that SEET is doing is connecting with the work that the board is doing. And then the Professional Learning Committee is, has been looking at restorative practices and what exactly that means and what role that could have for, for Somers. And then the organizational subcommittee is looking at, has been looking at our DEI policy that we had adopted a couple of years ago, and sort of translating that into what does that, what does that actually mean for each different level in the school district and each building?
In Somers.
How to communicate that within, and how are we communicating that and making sure that what it's saying we have to be doing is being done?
To come up with a common understanding of all the different pieces of the policy and communicating that out to the community, I think is what.
Yeah.
I agree, does that sound?
Yes, thank you, you said that better than I was doing. Yeah, so it was just really exciting to see all this work that's, that's going on. I think it's, it's been well organized and it's, it's moving in a way that seems really meaningful for Somers, so that was great. And then the other thing, I, for West Putt School Board Association, I emailed out the notes, Amanda and I both attended the community conversation, which ended up focused on DEI. So it was really neat to have that opportunity to talk with members of other districts and sort of what they're doing and, and where we are. And the neat thing with these community conversations is, you know, when you register for one, they give you a selection of topics. And so you choose which one you're most interested in, and then they, they make the topic be whatever had the most interest. So if you, there's going to be one more in the spring, so any board member can participate in these, great networking opportunity and learning opportunity.
And they're on Zoom in the evening, just throwing that out there.
And if you register in advance, you get to choose the topic, yes, in there at Zoom, and they're keeping them in the evening for participation. So if you didn't see our notes on that, I emailed them out, so you can just check for those. And there's going to be an advocacy meeting coming up, if anybody is interested in advocacy, any board member can join those also, and that's on February 13th.
Can you share a couple of ideas that have been brought up in advocacy meetings historically? Things that maybe board members were part of?
The last, you know what, I missed the last one, and there was one before that. So it's, it's looking at, it's a bunch of different things. So right now, some of the big topics for advocacy, they're looking at, they're, they're kind of setting, setting those priority, priorities as we go for February into some of the legislative meetings, which is another thing to watch your email, because you'll be getting things from West Putts if you want to sign up for any of these opportunities to meet with representatives and do some of that advocacy work. But like one of the things that's come up is the funding for Universal Pre-K. There are obviously things related to budget and foundation aid that are always advocated for. I'm trying to think off the top of my head, some of the other more recent ones, but those are a few of them. And one of the challenges was also noticing that for different districts, what their advocacy priorities are, is different also. One of the pieces is some of the transportation safety. So looking at like the stop-arm cameras that they've got, well, getting that to be a countywide thing and then to be getting it ticketed, because there's a high rate of people that are passing school buses. And so that's a problem that people are seeing throughout the county. So another point of advocacy. Yep, so watch out for those things coming up.
Anything on audit, Chad, or?
Yeah, we had the safety team meeting last week, although Dan covered most of what was covered there. I guess the only thing that he did not mention is the, it was a recent fire inspection, and it went really well, by the words of the fire inspector, he was.
Excellent.
Outstanding, so there was a lot of really good progress, I think, with implementation of policies and, you know, procedures, and it's, it's paying off that way. But otherwise, you know, he kind of covered all, all the upgrades and, and some of the status.
We have an audit committee meeting coming up next week, so we'll have more on that. Efe is not here for policy, anything from, from?
We did not have, we postponed the last policy meeting, so the next one will be, I don't have the date in front of me, the end of the month, I think.
We do have some policies for reading though this evening, so we'll talk about those, I guess, when we come.
Cewak meets next week, so I will be happy to report in the February meeting.
Amazing, thanks, folks. Anything from Communications, no? Not communicating. Okay. So if I'm following along, it looks like we have come to the board discussion on the So if I'm following along, it looks like we have come to the board discussion on the calendar draft. And preemptively, I just want to say I noticed that we have far fewer half-days on this upcoming calendar than we have historically, which I think is going to be well-received by the community, Dr. Bunch.
Yeah, so I, I'd have to go back. I, I don't think there's any left days, so I want to make sure that they're colored appropriately with the half-days. So I believe that those are the same. One piece we are looking at is that right now, we anticipate starting our faculty, which says most years started the week before Labor Day. And so I think we'll be starting that afterward. These are some of the details, this way it's a draft again tonight, just things we need to get solidified. We do know that June though is all the way through the 26th this year. So that's a piece we want to make sure we're in alignment there, and it also is a leap year next year, so that adds another day in the calendar. So we just have a couple of things we want to check with, with our Bosse's colleagues and things like that to making sure that we try to align with Bosse's as much as we possibly can. And so we'll get that tightened up and bring back over for the final one for us when we meet in February.
And, and that end date, the June 26th, that is, is really determined by New York State?
Yep, New, all schools, public schools in the state of New York do that. That's that regents week and then the rating days after that, yep.
So you start there and work backwards, right?
Pretty much, yep. And we are not allowed to have student contact before Labor Day. We can do some of our teacher professional work if need be, but we need to start, you know, with student contact after the 4th, so.
Or September 1st?
September 1st, yes, my apologies, September 1st, yeah. So that's one again, that, the other piece in here that you'll see as well too is then, you know, this will be our Juneteenth is on there again, just a reminder, that is another holiday that's inside the calendar that wasn't too long ago. So those are just some adjustments every year, there's a little bit here and there, we want to make sure. On there, so tonight's draft will be followed up with the final there in February.
And the 22nd, it shows in green as a full day, but it's really a half-day that counts as a full day because of the way the state was counting the contact hours, right?
Of Wednesday, November 22nd?
Is that, did I read that right?
That is half-day, yes.
It's a half-day even though it's green as in, right?
Yep, that was half.
Thank you. Any questions? Parents of?
No other questions for me.
Actually, my only question is, have we thought about snow days for next year? Are they actually, is there any talk about that?
So what we anticipate, same as we did last year and this year, is that it looks like the state is going to allow for the e-learning days to count. So our, our practice is looking at three traditional snow days. And then up to perhaps two days of e-learning, then after that, we will start peeling days off of that. Again, we know long extended periods and many, many days of e-learning just doesn't equate. So that's where we're looking to do the three traditional. And then after that, we'll have to watch it because it was one of those days where we have no power in the town. So that's not going to be a good e-learning day. So we'll have that flexibility, although that the state has afforded us that we certainly appreciate that we didn't have before, so, yep.
Great question.
So Passover and spring break don't coincide at all this year, huh?
They do not.
But we're starting after Labor Day.
True, which I think my kids will value more, to be honest, because that's where their birthday is, so.
Okay, so without any questions, we are in receipt of the financial reports. And we move to the minutes. Be it resolved that the Board of Education, having received copies of minutes of the meetings as presented, hereby approves the same motion.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Posed, abstained? Okay. Board action, we are in the personnel consent agenda. Be it resolved that the Board of Education, upon recommendation of the Superintendent of Schools, hereby approves the attached personnel agenda motion.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Posed, abstained? Sorry, there wasn't any conversation there, was there?
No.
Okay, excellent, because we're moving along anyway. All right, CSC, CPSC, be it resolved, the Board of Education, having received copies of recommendations of the meetings as listed, hereby approves the same motion.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Posed, abstained? Business consent, be it resolved, the Board of Education, upon recommendation of the Superintendent, approves the attached business agenda.
So moved.
Second.
Chris, Sunny?
Just a couple items on there. One thing just to point out is an amendment to the agreement that we have with our current architects. And that is so they can start working on what they're calling a master plan, kind of for that upcoming bond project in a, in a couple of years. So they're going to start that work. And then at the last board meeting, the board approved awarding the two bids for the last two projects of the safety and security project. So now it's just the approval of those contracts.
Questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Posed, abstained? Okay. So we move to the policies and the policies first readings this evening. Be it resolved that upon the recommendation of the Superintendent of the Board of Education, the Somer Central School District does hereby accept the following policies for a first reading. We have 6,700 R purchasing and 8121.1 contagious diseases, motion?
So moved.
Second.
Excellent, discussion? No discussion?
Those are pretty straightforward, yeah, very straightforward.
Just as long as everyone's had a voice. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Posed, abstained? Okay, so now we move to the policies for second reading, and once they've been second read, they're adopted. Be it resolved that upon the recommendation of the Superintendent of Schools, the Board of Education of the Somer Central School District does hereby accept the following updated policies for a second reading and adoption, 6,150 for budget transfers and 6,660 for independent auditor, motion?
So moved.
Second. Discussion?
I think we explained before the reasons for the changes in there.
Okay, excellent, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Posed, abstained? All right, so be it resolved, we move to the policy reviewed. Be it resolved that upon the recommendation of the Superintendent of Schools, the Board of Education, having done a review of the board policies, does hereby accept the following policy to remain as it is with no changes at this time, 6,700 for purchasing, motion?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Posed, abstained? Policies suspended, so be it resolved that upon the recommendation of the Superintendent of Schools, the Board of Education hereby accepts the following policies for suspension, 8120, 82, as presented, motion?
So moved.
Second.
Any questions? All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Posed, abstained? Excellent. So it looks like we are at the public comment session, so any members of the community who have joined us that would like to make a comment, please go ahead to the podium, state your name. Just a reminder that no district employees or students may be commented upon or identified by name or situation, please.
Who are, thank you.
Thank you.
Paul Chivardini, I have two children, primrose schools.
I'm sorry, could you state your name?
Paul Chivardini.
Thank you, Paul, sorry, I didn't hear.
Sure. Recently, school districts across New York State have written letters to Governor Hochul to express concern in regard to pending legislation that would mandate COVID vaccines for public schoolchildren. These boards are proactively making their voices heard on behalf of their districts and asking Governor, the governor, to continue down the path of normalcy rather than reverting back to COVID policies that did more harm than good and failed many students. As of today, there's no law binding a child to a vaccine requirement. These potential laws are merely bills sitting in the legislative branch in New York State. Past mandates such as mask mandates were also now laws. These mandates, requirements, regulations, what have you, were used to circumvent the legislative branch of the state and now have been deemed unlawful and illegal. There has been proven multiple times in New York State Supreme Court, federal and also in US Supreme Court. In New York State, no appeal has been won yet to overturn this ruling. If the governor and our agencies unilaterally decide to implement a mandate on vaccines without proper process from the legislative branch, that would mean that not one elected official will have cast a vote to pass it into law. Elected officials of New York State understand that this is a radioactive topic, and to pass, push a mandate that takes away a parent's choice is political suicide. Local Board of Health members, who are also professional doctors, will not want the blood on their hands of issuing this mandate either. Instead, they will push this decision to implement the mandate to the lowest elected unpaid volunteer officials in the state, the members of the Board of Education. School boards need to think about that and understand that they took an oath to uphold proper laws, not mandates and regulations. I'm concerned about this board in particular and the views and roles in handling this political dirty work of illegal mandates. Taking the choice away from parents will divide the community, force families to make the hard decisions about the children's, their child's education, will hurt student enrollment, and would have grave impact on the town itself. As a result, academic gaps and social issues would be staggering, and this will greatly degrade your goal of educating all children. For that reason explicitly, families and students in this district should understand the stance of this board on writing a proactive letter to the governor to request autonomy for sound decision-making and to advocate for parental choice instead of, instead of mandates. This will bring relief to many families who are concerned about the potential political leanings of members of the board. I think it's incredibly important to know where this board stands on this issue. Is the Board of Education in opposition to the COVID-19 vaccination mandate for school attendance? Or will, or will you pander to the politics of the state? If current members are not willing to put their name on a letter to protect parental choice, this community should know who those members are. This is especially true for any current board members who will be up for reelection. Thank you, and I look forward to hearing how this board will respond.
Thank you. Thank you for your comments. Any other community members willing to comment to the board? All right. Trustees?
I guess I'll start then. I just want to say thank you for all the presentations tonight, those were so great. And I was really happy to see the, the work progress report in the cafeteria and that they took the initiative to work with the students and with Doreen Stoker students in, over at the high school. I thought that was really great. And yeah, we had a really great seat meeting today, and I look forward to it. And I look forward to the next meeting for, to hear about the instructional information, so.
No pressure.
That's right.
No pressure.
A lot of exciting things going on, so I, I was able to get to a couple of the multitude of performances. There were some plays, and I know there's another musical coming up and the various musical organizations. I just love the fact that we have really nice breadth here in our school district. It's, it's very valuable and I think it's really important. And so that's a real source of pride, and it's a real talent, too, so it's really, really terrific.
Just congrats again to Zane. I was really glad that we were able to have that as part of our meeting today.
Yeah, thank you.
And it's a good reminder of the, the great resources that our district, that we have at, at the Bosse's, in the Bosse's programs, whether kids are there part-time or full-time, and, you know, they have some great things that they offer there. So great to see that student success.
Yeah, you know, it's interesting, as you were both talking, I was thinking, I know that one of our students, one of our own students initiated fundraising that was able to support some updated AV equipment, right? Speaking of the musical, which by the way, I can't wait to see the wedding singer. So I think that, that's something that I, I'm really impressed with here in Somers is that we are having our students learn to advocate for themselves and learning to sort of like speak up and speak out and then find different ways in the community to be successful. So I'm, I'm grateful that we started the, the evening the way that we did. And that we are sort of demonstrating that it is a breadth of, of talent that we have here, not narrowly focused. I look forward to seeing what comes up in the next meeting. Thanks, Dr. Bunch.
Sure, sure. And just to kind of round out, again, our next meeting is on the, I think it's Valentine's Day, Valentine's Day. At that, and that piece will be shifting from the non-instructional to the instructional side of that budget piece. So that's the, obviously the two big elements that we would have inside of there. And then if we have at least an initial estimate from the revenue side from the state, we'll bring that forth. It may come just like days before, but if we have it, we like to bring that forth. So we'll get it all together, so obviously the board can preview that. But that may be a late piece arrival, but if we get it, we want to make sure that drops in on the 14th. And then the other part with that is, much like tonight, we had some items moved from the fall to kind of mid-winter. We'll be looking at our student of kind of report, Forward in Excellence report. We've referred it in the past before the whole child report, so we're looking at, kind of looking at Forward in Excellence. Because the intent is we'll pull out one piece of that, looking at some of those core components educationally related. And then as we move forward, we'll be looking at some elements starting next fall. Like you have used to, the Learning Office will come forward in September and talk about the professional learning piece. That will be included in moving forward in this, this full report on Forward in Excellence. It aligns specifically to those pillars of excellence, the elements of excellence, the board kind of we added to last time with the retreat. This will kind of be that first start of, of that. So in the fall, we anticipate we'll have a Forward in Excellence report inclusive of those six elements of excellence. And this will be kind of the start of us working towards that, that product. So what you will see will be a, more of a graphic kind of looking document with some infographic kind of a look to it. We hope to embed some, some files in there, be them audio or video files, some students speaking to their experiences on certain areas. So hopefully then it does land up on the, on the website and collective kind of focus there. And so if folks want to hear from the kids, and then we can show the numbers. So that's the intent of the target we're looking at, bringing forward in that February 14th meeting. It will coincide hopefully well, frankly, with the conversation regarding the instructional staff. You'll be hearing heavily on the instructional programs from that regard, so. So just want to let you know that one. And then again, yes, we have the, the play coming up and things. Interestingly enough, I, I had an opportunity to visit some classrooms the other day and walked into one of our art classrooms. And one of our students was working in painting and drawing. It's all digital. And so the student was walking me through what was, the student was doing on, on the device. It was a, it was a kind of a pen, a digital pen with, this student had actually worked with a community member who was looking for somebody to illustrate the book that this person was writing for children. So now one of our 10th grade students is going to be the illustrator in a book that hopes to be published by the start of the summertime for children. So it was just one of those things, and hey, tell me what's going on, and that's what I know about him. About to ask her for autograph for, you know, the illustrator. So just, just that breadth and, and the things that our kids are just doing. So it was, it was just a nice example I thought I'd share with the board. It just, it's not a presentation up here, it's not a piece that's maybe happened out in the mill directly, but it's opportunities. And it was just, well, I, I'd do anything and anything I do to be around the arts. So very complimentary of the arts program and the, and the richness that this person has access to. So I thought I'd just share that short story, so.
Thank you. Thank you, Dr. Bunch. All right, so be it resolved that this regular meeting of the Board of Education be adjourned, motion?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Posed, abstained? Have a good night, everyone.